I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was an especially good rendition of the pledge tonight, folks. Good job. Please silence your cellphones before we proceed. We have one proclamation on our agenda tonight, and our interim city manager Kathy Ball is going to handle the recognition of our Florence, that's Hurricane Florence respondents. Kathy?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I have the special honor of being able to recognize employees who assisted with the impacts associated with Hurricane Floyd. As I kind of read through what these employees did, I would ask that anybody in the room who did this, if you would come forward in the room, I will call your name out later, but if you'll move forward now to the front of the room so you can be recognized, that would be awesome.
So folks, come on up.
That would be great. As you all know, Hurricane Florence had an extreme impact in eastern North Carolina and quickly overwhelmed the cities and counties in that region. These communities were in need of help due to the damaged water infrastructure, communication systems, and floodwaters. North Carolina requested assistance from less impacted communities, and Asheville employees stepped up in a big way. City of Asheville employees affected numerous rescues, affected numerous rescues from boats, helicopters, evacuated dozens of hospital-bound patients to safer locations, supported the communication infrastructure in the region, supported a large shelter for evacuees, coordinated and monitored social media to assist with the community engagement, assessed and supported the mental health needs of responders in the region, and helped to manage water infrastructure challenges. Numerous lives were impacted and saved by our amazing employees. In all 37 employees, assisted in the response of Hurricane Florence, we are very proud of the service that they have provided and how they responded to represent the city of Asheville. We want to take a minute to recognize these employees. From the US Cellular Center, Chris Coral; Water Resources, Brandon Buckner, David Melton; from Communications and Public Engagement, Kristy Edwards, Christina Hollingsley, Ashley Tranum Carson, and Polly McDaniel; from the Fire Department, Eric Johnson, Adam Wilson, Patrick Boland, Adam Hoffman, Eric Wardell, Wardwell, Scott Hare, Patrick Crudup, Mike Webb, Nathan Miller, Ryan Anderson, Kevin Prophet, David Sullivan, Ross Parkinson, Austin Hall, Spencer Tretot, David House, Jeremy Knighton, Wallace Sexton, Norris Going, Isaac McCurry, Jackie Buckner, Jamie Bryson, Barry Shepherd, Brandon Flood, Trey Young, Brad Holmes, Jay Benningcourt, Dennis Ball, Josh Jenkins, and Kelly Klop. From each of these groups, I would like just one of the members of each of the group to kind of tell you what they did to help with this mission. I've asked Chris Coral to speak a little bit about what he did to help out with the shelter, with the large shelter.
Good evening. Generally speaking, I kind of went in and helped run a really large building, because I run really large buildings. So with a partnership between the International Association of Venue Managers and the Red Cross, there's a few of us in each region that are trained to mega shelter managers. So when things pop up in driving distance, they ask us if we're available, if we're available, we go. I was, so I went. Went to Winston-Salem and helped coordinate with the emergency management team in Forsyth County with Wake Forest, who owns the venue, external relations with Haynes Brands, Walmart, Pepsi Company, things like that, to get donations of like water, pillows, toothpaste, whatever it was, and just helped coordinate all that, and then worked with the press in that area to help get information out. We ended up, shelter population of around 650 at our highest point. I was there just for the first week, and I think it went almost four weeks in total. So I was just there to help get it set up and running, and then I came back here to Asheville. So that's my story.
Wow. Wow.
Brandon Buckner?
Yeah, my role with the situation in Raleigh was that when I got there, the state EOC had been activated, and we had men and women who'd been up for three or four days. And basically, I was there to ensure that communication between certain municipalities on the East Coast that were being impacted hard, they were in situations where, you know, they were needing requests like generators for power, diesel, things like that. And the organization that I was representing was called NC Water Warn, and Warn stands for Water Waste Water Agency Resource Network. And we would facilitate these conversations. So for instance, like if, you know, a small town had a main transmission line break that was causing major damage, we were trying to find personnel from other agencies who was able to actually send that personnel in there, that type of thing. And it was just a lot of, you know, communication facilitating that type of stuff. And, you know, I was dealing with a lot of agencies like EPA, Homeland Security, and if they ever needed coffee, I was on it. So there was that, too. Thank you.
Nathan Miller was assigned.
Nathan Miller, I was assigned as part of one of the many boat crews we sent down east. So I can't speak as far as the communications and all that. But as far as boat crews go, before we left the city of Asheville, we made two rescues off the Swan River to two of Asheville citizens, and that was a legitimate, two people in need of rescue off the Swan River. Once we moved down east, we were sent to Sampson County. Our missions there were just to provide closure to a lot of open-ended response calls that the emergency response communications had down there in Sampson County. From Sampson County, we worked for two days, and then we were moved to Pender County. And in Pender County, we were the first boat crew to make contact with the isolated community of about 200 people. They'd been without power, food, or water for about six days. So we made contact with them, got any vital needs assessed and taken care of, and then supplied GPS coordinates to the National Guard so that they could provide air support and supplies to that community. And then after that, we were dismissed and brought back home.
Wow. Thank you, Paul. Maybe later someone can tell us about the mustache thing.
It's just a mustache.
They all have a mustache. Maybe, it's too early for Movember. Next is our consent agenda. I know we're going to pull one item off separately for discussion, and which item is the...
P.
P, I'm sorry, P. Is there any other item that anyone has any questions about or wants to have considered separately?
I just have a question.
On another item?
On H, that it's a resolution authorizing city manager to execute, basically, a new roof for the Shiloh Community Center. And my question was, did we look at solar, adding solar panels to the top of the roof? And if not, shouldn't we?
I would ask James, is James here to speak to this?
Is James? There he is. He's like, what?
James is right there. James, there's a question about replacing the roof, item number H, and the question is about whether we looked at solar panels for that roof?
Or at least building it such that they could accept solar later.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mayfield. James Ayers, General Services Director. The answer to your question is, yes, we had planned to accommodate solar panels on the roof. However, it's not part of, photovoltaic panels are not part of this particular installation. But we're designing both the roof as well as the fall protection system, such that PB panels can be installed, and the fall protection system will not get in the way with that.
Just full credit, that was actually Gwen's question.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember and Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Any other questions regarding any other item on the agenda?
Good planning. Not a question, I just wanted to flag Agenda Item, Consent Item J, which is a new program that the city is partnering with the Federal Home Loan Bank to provide down payment assistance loans to what are called community heroes, so fire, police, first responders, and schoolteachers, public schoolteachers, earning between 80 and 120 percent of AMI. This is a, we're doing a, proposing a year-long pilot program where the city is putting in 300,000, Federal Home Loan Bank is putting in 100,000, so it will be a pot of $400,000 that will be available for those community heroes who are buying homes in the city of Asheville to help them meet the down payment requirements. So that is a new, it's new, it's a pilot, and so if you know of anybody who sort of fits in that category, schoolteacher, fire, police, first responder, please let them know about it.
Okay, anything else? All right, so what we'll do is we'll have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda, and then if you're here to speak on any item on the consent agenda, we'll entertain speakers. So first, I need a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
I'm having a second.
Second, so we have a motion and a second. All right.
Do I sort of call out P right now, or do it after?
You can, this is the time.
Okay.
If you want to say something first, then we'll have, that's fine.
Yeah, so I just want to say a few things about Consent Agenda Item P, which is the establishing 100 percent renewable energy goal for this city. This is a, it is on our consent agenda, but it's a big deal, and so I just wanted to call it out and say a few things about it. This is, I think the best way to view this is, it's the city's next step in our, on the ongoing path towards sustainability. We adopted a carbon reduction goal about 10 years ago. We adopted a clean energy framework a few years ago. We launched the Energy Innovation Task Force a couple of years ago, and this is just sort of the natural next step. I know there are concerns among some folks that we don't know how we're going to get there, we don't know how much it's going to cost, and all of that is true, but we also, that's exactly where we were back in 2007 when we adopted the carbon reduction goal. We didn't know how we were going to get there, we didn't know what it was going to cost. But it's important to put the stake in the ground and have something that we're going to be working toward. That is particularly important in light of the IPCC report that was issued last week that tells us that all of the bad things about climate change are happening more and faster than we thought they were, and we have to, we have to increase our response to that as, frankly, as a world community. But here in Asheville, we have to, we have to do what we can do, and this is something that we can do. I want to address another issue that has come up, which is this question of how are we going to pay for it? How are we going to have the resources to do this? And the question is, we're just, we're going to have to find them. I will note that in all of this budget work session, work that we've been doing, our Sustainability Office, others may have noticed, is our smallest office. We have two people in that department, and it has one of the smallest budgets. And if we are going to do this right, that's going to have to change. We will have to put more resources into that office, we will have to give them the ability to meet this goal. I also do want to say that I, and this is really for the whole city, one of the questions that we ask all of the city manager candidates was whether they viewed sustainability as being sort of wholly the province of one office, or whether every city department had obligations to help meet the city's sustainability goals. And the answer, from every candidate, and most importantly, from Deborah Campbell, was that that, if the, if City Council has established renewable and sustainability goals, that every department has an obligation, every department has a role in meeting those goals. And I think that has not, that has not happened here in Asheville as thoroughly as we would have wanted, so I'm excited about that possibility. Also, just to remind folks that we, the city and the county are working together now on getting a report that will give us this path, tell us what it will cost, what it will take for both the city and the county to get to renewable energy. I think that'll, that will take about a year, so it's not anything that we should, you know, we shouldn't sit on our hands in that time. We need to keep going, there are opportunities, there's already work underway in the Sustainability Office on renewables, and we just need to keep doing that. Two last quick things that I want to flag. I do want to make a suggested change to the resolution itself in the fourth whereas, which is the paragraph about establishing the Energy Innovation Task Force. Right now, it says, whereas the city of Asheville adopted a resolution establishing a joint city, county, and utility energy innovation task force. I think we're, I would like to substitute Duke Energy for that. I think we're, I think we've worked closely enough with them to actually call them by their name rather than just utility, so that would be a formal suggestion to change that. And then the final thing I want to flag here is...
Is that just a reference to the name of the resolution when we created? It may just...
Well, that's a good, that's a good question.
That's what I thought it was, but Maggie, I'm sure you remember what we called that resolution. Just kidding, sorry.
If that is the formal name, and if that's what you're calling it, then it needs to stay the same, but if there's, if it's not, it just makes sense to put Duke Energy in there. So the final thing that I just want to flag is that one of the people who has been leading the effort, the advocacy efforts to get this resolution passed, is not here today. Her name is Carolyn Anderson. She had a massive heart attack a couple of weeks ago and remains in ICU at Duke University. She, I'm sure, is here with us in spirit and would very much want to be here in person, so I just want to, see, I'm the John Boehner of City Council, see? I can't help it. But just want to call out Carolyn and all of her efforts in this and say thank you to her.
I would like to, first off, I'm glad that we took the time to highlight this. This is definitely a big deal. It's a big deal. And two of the things that I believe that we've tried to make a big deal in the city moving forward is equity and inclusion, and of course, sustainability. And how we do that, how we get there, says a lot about, you know, how we fund these departments and make sure that they have the resources that they need in order to make these goals happen. I think some of the most significant barriers in other places to implementing large-scale renewable energy goals are climate change denial, but that doesn't seem to be the case here. And so when we start to think about, you know, where do we move from that point, coming into this meeting, I was thinking to myself, well, how do we put the finances behind this to make these goals work? And, you know, one of the thoughts were renewable energy bonds, which you can't do anymore because the Trump administration got rid of that. But to start thinking about, once we approve this, I would like for folks to start thinking about larger aspects of how to put the money behind these initiatives and goals to really make them concrete and not just have them on paper. And I would really like to proffer, what are we, what are we going to be doing in the future? Are we going to look at green bonds? Will we look at the general obligation bonds to help implement some of these things? And just start thinking about the finances that it is going to take, because 2030 is right around the corner. That is, that is a real fast date. And if you're going to be really ambitious on one end, you have to be really ambitious on the monetary end as well. So I'm glad that we're doing this, all the folks that advocated for this, I hope it just doesn't stop here in this municipality, but it spreads throughout the state, to other municipalities, to your state legislatures, including your local delegation, to make North Carolina, the state of North Carolina, committed to this sort of, this sort of policy adjustment that needs to happen. And where we go from here, I think Asheville will be able to set the tone and make these ambitious goals doable. So let's see if we can't make that happen. We're going to pass this resolution tonight with the hopes and the oomph behind trying to put the financial backing behind these sorts of policies.
Okay, so is there, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. If there's anyone wishing to speak on the motion, and I will have a couple of comments at the end of this about this, but, okay, so we have a hand up. So the, so, please, you were first, gentleman in the blue, yeah. So please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, Vice Mayor Wissler, members of the council. My name is Tom Tribble, I'm president of Elijah Mitchell Audubon Society, the local chapter, representing more than 1,200 members, not all of whom live within the city limits of Asheville, but I believe, I believe all of them are very concerned about the threat of climate change to people and to birds. And we do have more than 100 members of them in the city of Asheville, 45 of whom have signed a petition, another 72 have submitted an online email to the council. So I think almost all of our members who live in Asheville are urging you to pass this resolution. And I guess the only thing I would say is that birds are the canary in the mine, and my bumper sticker reads, protect birds and you protect the earth. So I just hope that you can do it before 2030, meet this goal. I know it's ambitious, but by that time, I'm going to be old, so.
Thank you. Give it to Maggie. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kim Braim, and I'm representing both the Sierra Club and the Western North Carolina Renewables Coalition, pinch hitting for Carolyn. And Western North Carolina Renewables Coalition is a coalition of 17 environmental, local environmental groups that are supporting this, that have been working to make this happen, will continue to be involved. I want to take just a second and thank John Nure and Stacy and our Sustainability Staff for all the work they put in to come up with this resolution, and all the wherises, and all the work that went behind that. It was a lot of work, and I want to thank them for doing that. Second thing I want to do is to let you know that there's broad community support for this. First of all, with all those that are here, that are here for this, would you please stand up? Great, so we're out. I also wanted to let you know that we've been working on letters and petitions. We had over 650 letters and petitions that I'm going to leave with you guys to let you know, there's a lot of people in the community that are very excited about what you've passed, and thank you. Second thing I wanted to do is to thank you guys. This isn't easy. We appreciate you stepping up and doing what you need to do to really make this Climate City USA. So thank you, all of the members of City Council for supporting this and for your ongoing support for making this happen. I also want to call up a couple other folks that have some petitions. First of all, we have some, Asheville High School?
Hello, my name is Elias Farm. This is Miss Tucker. I am a student at Asheville High, and I'm also dual enrolled in AB Tech. I have 506 signatures from Asheville High students that are all very, very excited to hear that this is going to be passed, and then 35 signatures from AB Tech. And this is definitely a huge issue for my generation, and it's a big deal that you guys are passing this. We are the generation that will be raising children in the aftermath of what's going to happen after 2030. And this is a very monumental moment in our history and what our earth is going to look like after this, and so I want to thank you all for your work. Thank you.
UNCA, I think, has some petitions as well.
Good evening, my name is Ben Stockdale, and I'm a senior at UNC Asheville, and I currently work on behalf of Duke Energy to enroll Ashvilleans in the Energy Wise Home Program. In June 2017, I started a small nonprofit called RenewAVL. Since then, we've been working to establish 100 percent renewable energy resolutions for both Buncombe County and the city of Asheville.
And my name is Danielle Holt. I'm a third-year student at UNC Asheville and a Western North Carolina native. I serve as co-president of UNCA's Environmental Club, Active Students for Healthy Environment, and have been active in renewable energy advocacy since June of 2017 with RenewAVL. We would also like to present you with 261 petitions from students at UNC Asheville.
Today is a momentous day for Asheville, but today is not the beginning of Asheville's commitment to the environment. Asheville was one of the first cities in the U.S. to establish an advisory committee for energy and the environment, and in 2007, we committed to cutting greenhouse gas emissions by 2 percent annually. Asheville's Office of Sustainability exceeded that goal and increased the goal to a 4 percent annual reduction. Today is the culmination of years of research, development, technological innovation, and shifting attention towards our environment.
By voting yes on this resolution, you are honoring both the citizens of Asheville and the environment by further committing to equitable sustainability. For this, we thank you and look forward to Asheville's advancement towards renewables.
Renewable energy for Asheville will mean new, good-paying jobs for our citizens. Per the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, solar installers are earning a median wage of $26 per hour.
Renewable energy for Asheville will mean decreased rates of asthma, pneumonia, bronchitis, upper and lower respiratory disease, and lost workdays caused by particulate matter that greenhouse gas emissions cause.
Renewable energy for Asheville will mean lower rates for residential and commercial ratepayers. The cost of energy for residential ratepayers in Asheville this month will be 9.9 cents a kilowatt hour. On average, the cost of solar energy is 8.8 cents a kilowatt hour and continues to decrease as technology improves.
Renewable energy is pragmatic for Asheville for economic, public health, and environmental reasons.
Going forward, it will be up to the Office of Sustainability to spearhead this historic initiative. With the support of the Blue Horizons Project staff, Duke Energy, Buncombe County's Office of Sustainability, Stacy, and your leadership, we can achieve this goal.
This resolution is a historic statement on behalf of the city, but unlike a municipal law, this resolution needs teeth, and when the budget cycle comes around, we need to commit funds to renewable energy projects.
With new provisions in House Bill 589 that create opportunities like community solar as well as on-bill financing, programs that allow utility bills to pay for equity in solar projects, we can achieve this goal in tandem with our city's priorities for affordability.
Thank you.
Excellent timing.
Next is Reverend Mark, Reverend Mark Ward from the Interchange University's congregation of Asheville.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Excuse my call, I'm just getting going right now. I wanted to say, to thank you for your vision and compassion and foresightedness to set aside this kind of a goal. I speak on behalf not only of my congregation, but also the Creation Care Alliance, which is a coalition of many faith communities of broad traditions. I want to tell you that I understand and appreciate and sympathize with what you're facing. About a year ago, my congregation said, wouldn't it be a great idea if we put solar panels up on the flat roof that we've got? We're only about three or four blocks away from you. And we said, yeah, that'd be a great idea. How on earth are we going to do it? So we went about exploring all the different pieces. What kind of panels would we get? Who would deliver them? What would they cost? How would we raise this money? Finally, after bit by bit, a lot of creative fundraising, I sympathize entirely with what you're talking about, because it takes real clever and creative thinking, but we did it. We raised the money for it, and within the next several months, you will see 100, more than 100, solar panels going on the flat roof of our building up there that will supply about 84 percent of our electricity, not quite 100. So we're working on insulation, we're working on replacing light bulbs with LEDs, everything we can think of. We want to get there, too. Hopefully, we'll be there in the same place with you. So congratulations, and go for it.
Thank you.
I'll just close the topic real quickly here. I know there's concerns about where's the money going to come from, but I wanted to remind you, you guys set a goal to reduce your carbon footprint. You've already reduced your energy usage 30 percent from where you started. That's... That's saving you over a million dollars a year, not just this year, every year into the future of what you would be paying in utility bills if you hadn't made those investments. We're asking you to take that million-plus dollars, reinvest it, so you get future savings in the future, or even more savings. And lastly, I wanted to let you know that it doesn't all have to come from energy conservation. Buncombe County is getting 20% of their total utilities offset by putting solar panel farm on a little landfill. You own a lot of land down near Mills River. That would be an ideal location for a solar farm. So there's a lot of ways to get there. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the consent agenda? Dee, yeah, sorry, Gil, next.
Good evening, members of council. My name's John Nure, and I'm the chair of the Sacy Committee, and I really just wanted to take the time to say thank you to Amber and Bridget. You have a phenomenal sustainability office, and they are two of the hardest-working women I've seen on a cause that they both care very deeply about. And while I think today is a great day for this resolution and for the steps that it says will take in the future to meet our renewable goals, I think the most important commitment that council can make isn't going to be today, it's going to be next year in the budget to allocate the resources that are necessary so that these, the sustainability staff can do the work that needs to be done to get us to where we want to be. And Bridget and Amber were critical in us having the information that we needed in order to advise you to the best of our ability. While we didn't always agree on everything, they were, it's the kind of process you want in developing policy so that the recommendation in the resolution is the best that it can be when it comes up for your consideration. So thank you to both of them, and I, of course, hope that you'll vote in favor of the resolution.
I just want you to know that we have a no-clapping rule, so don't get used to it, but we'll let you clap tonight. All right, so Dee. Yes, we're on the consent agenda, amazingly.
But I do want, my name is Dee Williams, and I do want to congratulate you for setting goals to reduce your carbon footprint. I'm a lead certified contractor, and I'm teaching right now a class on low-income weatherization in Southside, and we are fabricating some window inserts. So I just want to say thank you as well, and we're also going to get into the pay-for-performance contracting program with Duke Progress Energy. I'm going to speak on the opportunity zones for just a moment. I just want to say thank you. What we did, we came here to City Hall, and the mayor, manager, and Sam Powers, Economic Development Director, were kind enough to allow us to bring some folks from the community to talk about the opportunity zones. And one of the reasons why I started not to really even come and speak today was because I thought that, you know, enough people know about it, but one of the things that we want to do from our community is that we don't want to have the law of unintentional consequences set in. There are terms that are used like we hope. One of the things that we're going to have to do as a community, especially the black community here in Asheville, is we have to start acting intentionally, and we have to be proactive as a community together. Those folks who have themselves together now, bear in mind, a lot of people don't know what opportunity zones are, so you better Google that, okay? This literally could mean hundreds of millions of dollars coming into the black community here in Asheville. There are five of these opportunity zones, and every one of them contains a substantial number of people of color and certainly low income. That is a requisite. So one of the things that I want you to know is that maybe we have to have a difficult conversation. A lot of times, we'll pick people out, and I know that people feel close to people that they feel a kinship to or that they're affable, so to speak, but one of the things that we've got to do is to let bygones be bygones and use the brain power that folks who are willing and who know how to refi, who know how to do financial analysis and who know how to put these deals together. And that's going to be, it's going to be a requisite of how well we fare. I've seen Eagle Market Street go down and we lost that. I've seen Southside with all the promises and good intentions in the world, but the African-American community was not ready. It was, we must be ready to lead, we must be ready with information, and we must be ready with a plan, not only us, but the city council and concert. So that's why I'm here today. The other thing is Section 3, where our contractors and our entities are not in compliance with the federal government's mandate. We are happy and we are capable of certifying those contractors as we are AA, DOT, and the rest. So thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to following through. Please don't leave people out who have talent to offer, because we all pay for it when we do. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dee, and thanks for your work so far on the opportunity zones and bringing people together around that issue. Anybody else wishing to speak on the consent agenda?
My name's Matilda Bliss, and I'm also speaking about the Opportunity Zone Resolution. I was with Dee and others when we met with city manager Kathy Ball and Mayor Manheimer about a month ago, and really glad to see this resolution about to be passed, and it's a great opportunity. And yeah, it could really bring some much-needed funds into Southside community and other communities as long as it's used right. And so thanks for being involved so far, and continue to please to reach out to the community and work to make this a real, a real boon to economic development and affordable Asheville. And also, I think it's great that there's the 100% renewable energy resolution also getting passed, and would also hope that there will be opportunities for people of color and low-income individuals in this town to be part of the, you know, what some folks are calling a Green New Deal, to make sure that that is able to be, those two different worlds are able to connect, and we can do a lot of good here. So thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the consent agenda? Yes.
My name is James Smith. I wasn't going to speak, but Julie, what you said about the IPCC report, I really appreciated connecting that with like the global crisis that we're in right now, and I think it's a really ambitious, bold step that the city of Asheville has taken to set this resolution because as a young person, I'm terrified by climate change, and I want you to know that this is supported by the young people of Asheville, and we will help follow through with this, and I just really appreciate taking what could be considered a politically risky decision, but recognizing that you are supporting the future of your community. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I just had one comment regarding the item, this item. As is stated in the resolution, personally, I've participated with the mayors who stand behind the Paris Climate Accord, and Julie and I have actually spent a year going down to Duke University to participate in, with a group, over the course of a year, bipartisan group looking at, how did they phrase it, how to meet the future energy needs of North Carolinians. And that inevitably brought together different groups that span the political spectrum on environmental issues, but also folks that are involved in energy innovation, environmentalism, and so on and so forth. And one of the, I'm very supportive of this resolution. I think this is, I mean, it's really a no-brainer for Asheville and just another step in our journey as a community to identify ourselves as a climate-forward community, a community that understands the impacts of climate change and trying to do our part to address it. The one, the one, you know, well, there's two aspects. One, we've already talked about, and that is our capacity to handle projects as a city in terms of staffing. And then the other is just sort of a broader question, and I know Ken talked about some ways to finance the outfit required to go 100% renewable, because we're talking about an investment to the tune of, I would imagine, several million dollars to be able to create the generation needed to offset the use, either directly used by the city or offset the use that we can't otherwise directly use. And when we talk about an investment made by a city to the tune of several million dollars, we're talking about, you know, having to find that revenue, and some of it, I would assume, would obviously be found through the savings we would see and not having to pay that power bill or as great a power bill. So there's that, but then if the, if, I guess what I'm trying to say is if the other revenue has to be made up through taxes, we're looking at property taxes. And one of the things that I worry about is energy poverty in our community, and how do you, how do you thoughtfully disperse the cost of embracing renewable energy? Do you do it on a city level? Do you do it on a county level? Do you do it on a state level? Do you do it on a federal level? And it's, it's different depending on how you do it. Ideally, our federal government would step up and say, you know what? We're going to have, we're going to have a renewable portfolio requirement of all utilities that provide energy in America. Boom, tomorrow. Is this going to happen? No. And our, ideally, we would have it happen on a state level, and I see that that's fairly unrealistic. I just, I just pose to you the question of, is it fair to make a population of one city bear the cost of 100% renewables when it should be legislated at least on a statewide basis to cause the utility company and the ratepayers across the state to bear the cost of generating renewable electricity? So I hate to get a little too wonky about this, but, you know, we're really just talking about making a change that we can make. This is within our grasp, we can make it. All I am doing is questioning the end of who pays for it, who justifiably pays for it. Utility bills are a regressive tax, some would argue. They're, they're not the fairest way to tax households, but on the other side, I understand the environmental concern and the benefits that embracing 100% renewable energy bring to our community and to our world and how necessary that is. So I, I am only just sort of philosophizing here, posing an eternal question about how you really structure this so that it is as fair and bearable as possible for a community. I just want to recognize that challenge that we will have. So yes, creative financial solutions to do something that we absolutely must do. My two cents. Anybody else have some sense? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Let's take a minute here.
We did one at 7:45?
It better be.
Oh.
Winning a, including.
Including closed session.
You really, you really captured the moment, you really captured.
No, no, it's fine. No, no, no. Okay, let's go.
Maggie, do you, is it especially hot in here? Okay, we have one presentation, and Dawa Hitch is going to make that presentation. This is the citizen survey results. I almost said that like Family Feud, but I.
No buzzers here. I've lights up for 10 minutes into the presentation. Good evening, council, mayor, Dawa Hitch, Communication and Public Engagement Director, and it is my pleasure tonight to bring to you the results of the citizen survey. This is a scientific survey that we right now do every, we've been doing every three or so years. It does have a, it seeks to have a representative sample, which gives us a little bit more confidence in the interpretation of the results. So I guess the question always is when we do surveys, well, what are we going to do with the information, right? How is it that you're going to use that? And in our community engagement efforts, we are committed to reporting back to how information is being used. So one of the ways, the information you'll see tonight will be used will be through department directors and the continuous improvement of their departmental operations. Another way is through effective community engagement. You'll see as we get into the results of the survey that we can come to understand some things about our community as a whole and then different groups within our community, and that can help us make sure we're reaching everybody and that our engagement is as inclusive as possible. And it can also help with equity and inclusion, and we'll talk about some examples there, but just to prime you a little bit, there's opportunity with understanding what different priorities are, for example, in different areas. That information could then be used to help prioritize what kinds of projects are assigned to different areas, and that we're doing that in an equitable and inclusive way. A little bit about the methodology, we work with a company who is a partner with the International City Managers Association. They do these surveys all across the nation. They've got a pretty big database of 500-plus cities that we can compare our results to so we can kind of get an idea of, are our results part of maybe a national trend? Are they something unique to Asheville? So that information can become very valuable and we can benchmark. It was sent to 1,500 homes, and 343 people responded to that invitation. So the invitation went out to 1,500, 343 people responded to that, and that's about a normal response, right? 24 to 40% response is normal for surveys of this size. We also, just to, I won't get too, unless you all want me to, get into the details of the confidence interval and the margin of error, but what I will say, to try to boil it down to plain language, is that if we did this survey, if we sent it out 100 times, 95% of the time, we could be confident that the response that we got would be within five points plus or minus of what you're getting ready to see. That's my attempt at statistics in plain language. So the sample, it might be helpful to, for people to understand that there was over-sampling of multifamily housing, and that is because, you know, typically, those would be apartments, areas where there's more than one home together. Typically respond, the response rate is less for those, so they sent more to those addresses to make sure, again, that we have a representative sample, and the results were weighted to reflect the demographic of the population.
Sorry, what does that mean?
That means that if, okay, maybe I should go back and say this, for all of the people that, I love data, I really do love data, so for the people that really love data and want to get down into the mid, into the deep part of that, it's all available online, including the technical appendices, so you can see how those weights were distributed. And so that, what the goal of weighting is, is to make sure, again, that we have a representative sample, that we have definitely reached different age groups, people of different races and ethnicities, so the details for how that's done is in the technical appendices and is already posted online. So that's a great, it's a great, great question. Quality of life, so we get an overall view of people's satisfaction, their thoughts about life here in Asheville through this survey, and here you can see that most people, about 75, a little over 75%, rated the quality of life as excellent or good. of life as excellent or good. This overall rating, the survey administrators took into account the responses to the questions as well as the special topic questions that you'll see here coming up next. So we can get an overall understanding of where people are. And then, as I mentioned before, we can understand how we stack up against different cities. We can also, because we use the same administrator and they're similar surveys, we can compare trends with how we as a city are doing. So we can understand if people are more satisfied than they were in 2015 or more dissatisfied as well as where we are with benchmark as we compare to other cities. So there is a ton of information in these reports. I thought I'd just pull out real quick the areas where we are above benchmark and where we have made progress with satisfaction or participation since 2015. And that is the number of people who said they watched a local public meeting. So for engagement, I'm going to say that's a good thing. Below benchmark and trending down are a lot of things that are related to mobility. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But so driving in the city, land use planning and zoning, whether or not people would recommend Asheville, childcare, preschool, and then overall direction. So there's been a bit of a downward trend. Those exact numbers are also available online. And if you're interested, I have some of that here with me tonight. I can dig in a little bit deeper, but no, we've got a lot to get through. So one other nice thing about this survey is that we are able to benchmark against those 500 cities. And we're also able to benchmark against cities of a similar size that are tourist destinations too, because there are some things that you will see are different for cities that have the kind of economy that we have. So being able to benchmark against other cities, are they experiencing the same thing as we are or not, is also helpful. And just to give you an idea of what some of those cities are, Ashland, Oregon, Sedona, Arizona, Fort Lauderdale, Roanoke, Virginia, there's 50 of them across the United States that we can, that are in that similar-sized city benchmark.
So when you, so you're saying the benchmark, the trending up and down, this is against these other 50 similarly sized cities and their polling?
Oh, no. Thank you. Let me clarify. Benchmark is against all 500 cities in the database. Whether we're trending up or down has only to do with our performance in Asheville.
As against ourselves.
As against ourselves. Yep. So when you look at 2015 to now, the number's trending up for watch the local public meeting, for example. All right. So in addition to all of those stock questions that we have that we can be benchmarked against other cities, we also submitted some special topics to get input from the community on. The police department specifically asked that we include in this year's survey this question about police performance. And here you can see the results. Excellent, 12%. Good, 37. Fair, 35. And poor, 16%. So again, this is information that departments can use and how they structure their work plans for the following year and how they interact and communicate and continue to grow relationships with community. Another special topic that we, that we had included in the survey this year was the support for, whether or not there was support for the short-term rental ordinance, specifically the accessory dwelling units.
It seemed good at the time.
The idea. The question was, the city of Asheville recently passed an ordinance that prohibits residents with separate detached dwellings, as an example, an apartment over garage, from renting these units for periods less than 30 days. To what extent do you support or oppose this ordinance? And you can see from the results of this survey, the results suggest that the community's split on this question.
I believe that this confirms the emails that we received.
Right. So Doll, on this, so those in this case who strongly support, they are strongly supporting the prohibition, right?
Do you, from rent, yes. The city passed an ordinance prohibits residents from renting these units. Yes, so the ordinance was passed and do you support this ordinance, which would be the opposite, I think that's what it is.
Right. So folks are looking at this and they see strongly support, those 24% do not strongly support ADUs, they strongly support the ordinance.
Exactly. They strongly support the ordinance, which currently prohibits accessory dwelling units.
The 17 would be, I don't understand this question.
It could be. And I should say too, that another value of these surveys is a lot, it doesn't necessarily, it gives us a good idea and also is an opportunity for us to see where we need to engage more and make sure that we really understand what people might have meant or just dig deeper into a topic. In general, not, it doesn't have to specifically be about short-term rentals, but across the board, it gives us lots of information. All right. So we also had an open-ended question purposefully to make sure that people had the opportunity to share anything that might be on their mind that was not listed in the survey questions. And here's the results of that. And here are the percentage of respondents who identified, and what they identified as being the single biggest issue facing Asheville. And so you'll see that there is a lot of similarity between this open-ended question and then also when we're getting ready, we'll jump in here into funding priorities. And again, all of this information, word for word, the responses are available online. All right. So there, that was the general. So we also had the opportunity to dig a little bit deeper into what different areas or groups think. And I mentioned earlier, that can be very helpful in community engagement, can be very helpful in where we invest in infrastructure. So the two things that we looked at, we looked at geographic subgroups, north, south, east and west. 04 and 05 had to be combined because of the size. We needed to get enough people to have, to increase the sample size. So we had to fold two zip codes into one there. And then we have demographic information and you can read what those different ones are there. And again, that breakdown also available online. And here's why that can be really helpful to know. So here is the overall, this is how people, this is how people rated that they engage with the city at least once a month. These were the sources they used at least once a month. This is what's captured here. And so you can see here for the whole city, 60% of respondents said it was website, 50% or so said social media, and then on down the line. What's very helpful, I can speak about, speak for my department specifically. Uh-oh. Somehow we missed a slide. We'll post the slide because what you would see in this slide is that when you look at white alone, not Hispanic, or Hispanic and/or other race, you'll see that website becomes much more of a resource for Hispanic and/or other race, people who identified that way. Social media is much greater, the reliance on social media, the reliance for, or the number of people that, who identify as Hispanic and/or other race that watched a meeting online, all of those far exceed what you see as the responses for those who identified as white alone, not Hispanic. So for my department specifically, that's very helpful to know if we're trying to reach people and make sure that we're doing it equitably to know what people's preferences are. And there are preferences based on different ways people, either their race, ethnicity, age, et cetera. All right. Well, here's how this slide was supposed to look. So this is the overall for community investment priorities. And what I'm going to show you now is an example of geographic area and how you can see that some areas have higher, they prioritize things in a different way. So this is overall, this is looking at all of the different respondents, or all the different respondent, responses. And then here you can see 28806 is an orange. And 28806's highest priority, for example, was public safety, including police fire and emergency preparedness. So you can see there's a lot of similarity, but there are different areas of the city who have higher, who have prioritized things in different ways. 28801, for example, put a much higher priority on public transportation, for example. So again, it just gives us some bit of insight into what people feel is most important for their quality of life in different areas of the city. So that's how that other slide was supposed to look. You're supposed to be able to compare. Apologize for that. Okay. And it looks like, all right. So here, again, to wrap everything up, these are all the different facets of community that you'll find in the Community Livability Report. That report, they're all posted online and it is the one that's in plain language, the easiest read, I'll say. And what you'll see there is that we're right around benchmark for all of these different facets that they identify, except for mobility, we're below benchmark. Areas that are of the most importance to our community are natural environment, economy, and mobility. So that's different from 2015. In 2015, the highest priorities were environment and economy. This year, based on the results of the survey, mobility has been added. And next steps. So these results are available to the community now and they'll be shared through conversations and engagement that we have in the coming year. They are available as council considers its strategic priorities. And once those strategic priorities are identified, then you'll also see these reflected in the management strategies that are related to the budget.
Doll, just on the website.
Mm-hmm.
Is it on the website?
Yeah, if you go to, yeah, if you go to transparency, if you go to transparency and more information, so right on the front page, more information, it takes you to...
That's not terribly intuitive.
We might want to stick it like a little higher priority for a little while.
Yeah, we will. You guys got the presentation first.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
If we go there, we'll see the breakdown on how race and ethnicity and income and...
We will. Yeah, it would be, it's under the, it's the subgroup, the demographic subgroup comparison is what the name of that report is. And all of that will be in the post that explains that this information is out there and available. But again, you guys, we presented to you all first.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, that was the, we don't have any other presentations on for tonight. We have three public hearings. Our first public hearing, should I talk slowly? I think this is, oh, Todd, you're here, okay. Public hearing to consider adoption of the Burton Street Neighborhood Plan. And Todd will explain why this is again on our agenda.
Oh, I see, okay. I'll figure this out eventually. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Todd O'Plachaney, Planning and Urban Design Director. Hopefully, the Burton Street Neighborhood Plan is a good step in the right direction to address some of the concerns that Dawa addressed with the citizen survey and where we're going with growth and planning in the city. But the reason I'm here tonight is that the Burton Street Neighborhood Plan that was initially reviewed and supported at the city council meeting, at your last meeting, we wanted to make sure that we follow the correct procedures and process for how we normally adopt neighborhood plans within the city. And our legal department helped kind of identify that the plan that was reviewed last time wasn't done so under the public hearing format. So I'm here tonight to present exactly the same exact plan that Simone Robinson had presented to you all at the last council meeting. Nothing has changed at all. City staff has been in contact with residents of the Burton Street Neighborhood, just to alleviate any potential concerns that they have. But just to let you all know that we're here tonight just to make sure that this is, this plan is adopted as a, as a public hearing agenda item. So as you all know from the presentation from last time, the Burton Street Neighborhood is one of 10 communities being impacted by the proposed I-26 connector project and has been identified as an environmental justice population that has incurred reoccurring impacts. With that in mind, the DOT for the state can provide additional mitigation opportunities to lessen the burden of the project on the Burton Street Neighborhood. Another goal of this project was to expand mitigation measures as it relates to the I-26 project and to actually make this a neighborhood plan that has additional strategies and goals. And some of those goals of the plan in this effort are identified on this slide. Throughout the 10-month-long process, there were a number of community meetings that were held with the community, an online community survey, as well as paper comment forms. And all these techniques and the input we received from that were used to, as the framework for the Burton Street Neighborhood Plan. This slide just outlines some of the table of contents in the plan. And what I would highlight here is that all the goals and strategies in the Burton Street Neighborhood Plan were reviewed to see how they align with the newly adopted Living National Comprehensive Plan. And I think that's a really important element of the Burton Street Plan, as many of the goals and strategies, or all of them, do align with the recently adopted comp plan. The plan also includes a number of potential mitigation strategies, mostly capital improvement-type strategies, things like new sidewalks, improvements to the community center for Burton Street Neighborhood. These are different capital projects that the Burton Street Neighborhood has identified as priority projects for their community. Those projects and all the strategies are listed throughout the plan, but they're also highlighted in this table at the end of the planning document, which also highlights the potential implementing agency for these strategies. I would note though that, that all these strategies, at some point, although we've identified who a potential lead agency is, obviously, a number of these strategies may not be funded yet. We'd have to work with the city council, see how some of these projects fall within our capital improvement program and other programs within the city, and also work with the Burton Street Neighborhood further to kind of work toward implementing some of these, these strategies. But there are a large number of strategies where we've identified the Department of Transportation as, as the potential lead implementing agency and really due to the fact that that's related to the I-26 connector project, that there's a real opportunity here to implement many of these strategies that have been identified in the plan. And this is just a list of additional strategies. But again, many of these strategies highlight the need for sidewalks, community center space, additional park, park space within the community, things that shouldn't really be a surprise, but these are some of the priorities that the neighborhood has identified that are very important to them. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the plan.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thanks to Joel Burgess for reporting, I believe it was you, after our last one. And you said that, you indicated that this was not adopted in the same way that some of the other neighborhood plans were, and that caused us to say, well, hey, maybe we need to do something different. So appreciate it.
We need to open a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment? I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to recommend that the Asheville City Council adopt the Burton Street Neighborhood Plan in that the Plan 1 includes mitigation strategies related to the I-26 connector project. 2 was developed with community input and reflects the Burton Street Neighborhood's vision for the future. 3 provides guidance on...
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you. The next public hearing is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the conditional zoning of 190 Hominy Creek Road for Buncombe County Transfer Station Landscape Plan and conditions to accommodate environmental conditions of the site and limitations by the state of North Carolina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. I'm Sasha Bertinski with Planning and Urban Design, and I'm here to present to you for your consideration amendment to a conditional zoning that was done for the Buncombe County Transfer Station on Hominy Creek Road in West Asheville. The original, you, City Council reviewed this plan in May of 2017. The county expanded and revamped their transfer station. The transfer station is built on an old landfill. So just to review really quickly this map, this is the area, it's between the French Broad River and the, and Hominy Creek itself. Across the river is the Biltmore Estate. Across and above this property is the farmer's market. And this is in a small area of city zoning and a lot, surrounded by mostly Buncombe County So what happened in the meantime since last May, the state, I believe, did much deeper analysis into the site and found that there's a lot of trash under the ground in much greater extent than we ever knew. So on this drawing, the blue line is the extent of what I've called a trash plume, if you will. In addition, they also did some exploration, this is Hominy Creek Road, they did some exploration along the road and did borings and found that there's actually a fair amount of trash there as well. So what this does is it impacts the ability to put street trees along Hominy Creek and trees on top of the trash. Part of the original CZ plan was because we knew there was trash here on top of the site, so they couldn't do trees for parking lot landscaping. So the plan was to put it along here, I'll go to the aerial. The plan was to put it along here, along, this is a city-maintained greenway, to put it in this kind of treed area along the greenway. Well, that trash actually comes up almost all the way to the greenway. So the state said, you can't even put it there, forget about it. And actually, the state wanted the county to remove all the vegetation along that greenway. So the county fought pretty hard, I think, to prevent that from happening. This is the southern end of that park, so this isn't, this is not the CZ area, but this is county-owned land. Many folks know this, Hominy Creek Park is a place to get on the greenway, or to launch a boat, or do a takeout of a, of a boat tubing trip. So the county planning director, Nate Pennington, has had to be very creative with landscaping, and he'll talk about, more about this in a minute, but he's designed a berm, a floating berm up here at the top of the site for shrubs, which the state has accepted. And he's also, and this is a little too dark, I apologize, but down here, at the southern end of Hominy Creek Park, has done a solar study, where will trees survive? He's found space for 16 trees, and so they're, they can plant those, and then we're offering to donate five to the city in addition. And I've talked with the friends of, or I haven't talked directly, but staff has been in touch with friends of Hominy Creek Greenway, and they'd be glad to take those trees and plant them along that greenway, which is not too far from here. So in your packet, you have a revised conditions, redlined, and a clean version. Let's see, what else? Staff felt comfortable, given that, you know, the county's able to maintain such a great amount of vegetation along the greenway, that it's actually going to be, you know, okay, these trees are going to help block the view of all the, on site of the parking lot. And, Leslie, sorry. Yeah, I think, I guess generally I would say staff is comfortable with the proposal as shown. And Nate Pennington's here to give you a short presentation as well.
Any questions for Sasha?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So just going back to, you said the state wanted Buncombe County to cut down all those trees where the trash has extended out, and is that because they don't think trees can grow on top of trash? Is that the deal?
I think there's a danger, and Nate could probably explain it much better, of the roots penetrating the fill and gases, dangerous gases coming out.
Got it, I see. Okay, that makes more sense. It was just going to be ironic to...
This is a, I think it's called, this is a non-compliant landfill. This was before there were actual, this was from the 50s and 60s, 70s, and before there were regulations around landfills and how they were treated.
And so another question, and Nate, I'll sort of be asking you this too, but one of the questions I raised with staff ahead of time was, you know, this is, I mean, we're, if you look at it sort of in concrete terms, we're, we're losing trees that were promised to the city as a part of this. I don't, I don't ever want to lose trees. I understand we can't put them here, but can we, I mean, do our ordinances allow us to have those trees planted somewhere else? Is there something that prevents us from still sort of securing that same number of trees and then just putting them somewhere else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Like the tree in Lou. Tree in Lou.
Tree in Lou.
So I was, Nate, you went to Buncombe County.
Would you like to welcome Buncombe County's former city of Asheville trader?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, welcome back. That feels good, huh?
As council members of the public. I think the last time I was here, I was answering a question for Dr. Mumpower. So we've learned a couple of things with this project. This is probably one of the most complicated projects I've ever worked on as a planner. Building on trash, come to find out, is no easy task. We had to keep the site open the entire time. That's because all city of Asheville trash trucks, as well as the county and also private citizens utilize the transfer station. What happens is you drive trucks into the transfer station and you repack the garbage into specialized trucks, which then head out to the landfill at Panther Branch. We employed some innovation on this property. We utilized a micro pile foundation for the building itself. This is a drone, we flew this the day of the grand opening. This is the new building here that we built. This was the existing older building. This is the vehicle maintenance facility, and this is the check-in area, and it employs two entries here. At the very end is the park itself, and this is the culmination of Hominy Creek, where it meets French Broad. There is our new sidewalk, I just wanted to point out, on Hominy Creek Road. I'll talk about that in just a second, and I'll be brief. Basically, we were finishing up, and all of a sudden I got a call from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Pre-Regulatory Landfill Division. And they said, we've got a problem. We're reviewing your plans for planting on landfill, and we just pointed out that there's prohibition, we cannot allow you to plant anything on the landfill materials. So we actually thought that the landfill materials were not as great, as Sasha pointed out, the plume area, we thought it was a little bit smaller, but come to find out when we were building the sidewalk, doing geotechnical borings, we found that it to be encompassed most of the site. So if you've ever been out there, you wonder topographically why it's so much higher, your answer is it's sitting on, all on garbage. That posed a couple of other problems. We were originally told that we needed to remove existing mature vegetation, specifically riparian vegetation, which would not have made for a good day for our greenways folks, for anybody, county, city, anyone that lives here. We did come up with some innovative ideas. One was the floating island, which the state accepted, thankfully, that took care of the parking lot landscaping, and that left us to come up with some ideas in terms of the trees themselves. So I went out personally to the site at least four to five times and studied specifically, walked up and down the site, including the entirety of the greenway, all the way down to the park, and also coordinated with the utility, utility agencies, Duke and MSD, and found that basically the site is ringed with large sewer lines, Duke Energy Power Lines, rights-of-way, and large swaths of poison ivy that cover most of the trees in these areas are very large existing tree areas. What I think, when we originally approached the city with this project, is that the conditions written at the time did not fully capture the total number of the existing trees on site. There are large trees in this area, so I really, to be honest with you, don't think we're actually losing trees here. I think what we've come up with is, we want to look for the ability to plant trees and plant them in a way to where they'll survive and not be crowded out, because if you walk this greenway and you stay there for a few hours, you'll notice that, yes, you'll get a little sun for a minute, and then it quickly diminishes. So I've come up with a plan to plant 16 and then donate five. Why did we come up with five? I wanted to put those five along Hominy Creek Road, because they would have made very nice street trees. Originally, it would have been nice to have them along the sidewalk, but again, the state said, you can't do that. So ironically, we're just trying to basically be in compliance with all the conditions, and the other ironic part is, condition number eight said, "All legally required local, state, and federal permits and approvals must be obtained prior to initiation of construction, and any pertinent legal requirement shall be met." So we're in a small quandary here. We're asking for your help with closing this project and ending this chapter. Thank you very much. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I guess, Nate, I would ask you the same question, is that, so I hear you that there are old trees on that site that, that you all didn't know about, but, but it, it still, it still feels to me like we're giving up trees that we could be planting somewhere. So I guess I'm wondering why, and I'll say this with the, with the, the most gracious smile I have, why should we, why should we let you out of 40-some-odd trees?
I don't think you necessarily are. If you'll wait for that poison ivy foliage to drop, I'll be happy to go back out to the site and verify that we have enough credits to cover the other existing trees.
So that, so these were, this was, these 54 trees were, help me understand that, say that again.
So at the time, we conducted a vegetation survey and elected to kind of stop and say, we would, we would plant, you know, make up for the total that were required. Then we found out from the state that you can't do these plantings at all, so we kind of stopped counting. I can just simply continue that counting and find probably enough credits with existing vegetation where I don't think you're losing any trees.
I understand now. Thank you.
Okay, could we just recall for a moment, at our last meeting last week, we had a suggestion about using goats to eat invasive plants in this area? If you want to partner, you know, we might be able to do that.
Buy some, the city and the county will buy some goats.
Right down the way from where we want to eat.
And ironically, poison ivy is native vegetation.
Great.
It's just, it's invasive, but it is native.
Well, will the goats not eat it?
They'll eat it.
Yeah, they'll eat it.
That's all we care about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment? I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I will. I'll move to approve the amendment to the industrial conditional zone with the requested condition for the reduced landscaping, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan in that, one, the site has historically been in industrial use, two, the state of North Carolina has prohibited Buncombe County from planting trees on the site and along Hominy Creek Road, and three, the county has worked with the state to preserve the existing trees and vegetation along the greenway.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are to our third and final public hearing. A public hearing to consider conditional zoning of 324 Biltmore Avenue from Regional Business District to lodging expansion conditional zone for the construction of a seven-story, 103-room hotel. And Jessica is presenting.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. As was stated, this is a conditional zoning request for lodge, to lodging expansion for the development of a new lodging use. The project site consists of a single parcel, it's about .78 acres, located at 324 Biltmore Avenue. Primary frontage is along Biltmore Avenue, but there's also secondary frontage on White Fawn Drive and a bit that comes up White Fawn Place to the rear. As you can see, it's owned regional business. Regional business is also to the north and west of the site, institutional to the south as you get into the hospital campus area, and then RS8 up White Fawn Drive to that residential neighborhood that's behind the project site. The site is currently vacant. There's a variety of uses in the area with medical and office uses, as well as that, that residential, single-family neighborhood. So the applicant is proposing to construct a single building, the new hotel on the site. There's 103 rooms and associated parking. The building is proposed at seven stories. It's placed directly behind the sidewalk in an urban design. There's a portion of the development of the building that falls within this restricted height zone that we've put in place with the lodging expansion district. If, if a project is developed in that district and it's within 100 feet of a residential district, any, any, any building height within that 100 feet is limited to match the height maximum of the residential, which is 40 feet. So in that area, and that's shown here on the site plan with this arc, within that area, that's that 100 feet, the building is below 40 feet. It's actually about 23, 24 feet, so that's, but the rest that's up at the street is, is up to seven stories, which is below the height maximum for the, for the district. Vehicular access to the site is proposed from a single driveway from Biltmore, and then provides access to 106 parking spaces that are all within the structure. Sidewalks on Biltmore and White Fawn meet the 10-foot width requirement for lodging expansion, and the applicant has proposed, included a transit shelter at the corner of White Fawn and Biltmore. There's landscaping that's required for the project, and there's a number of conditions that you see in the staff report related to landscaping. There's also a number of design and operational standards required for the code, but the project does comply with all of those. So just to touch on the landscaping conditions, we've got street tree requirements for pretty much every, every new development. And in this location, there's a 24-inch waterline that runs right in front of the project, and then it's also within that DOT clear recovery zone where they don't want to see any trees or obstructions that are running along the front of the building at all. So what the applicant has proposed as a way to kind of get to the intent of the standard, but not put anything in the ground would be, and it's a little bit difficult to see on this, on this rendering, but the, they're proposing to put the required number of street trees, but in large planters. So this was discussed a lot with the Planning and Zoning Commission, how that would work, how the, the large shrubs or trees would need to be pretty substantial to provide the shading and desired intent of the street trees. And so the applicant was willing to go with all of that, as well as incorporate the needed irrigation to make sure that they thrive. There's another modification related to landscaping for the property line buffer, because the, the neighborhood that's behind the site, there's a fairly significant grade change, the neighborhood's much higher, and the code allows for a reduction in the width of a property line buffer when you have that significant grade change. So they're allowed to have, reduce the width of their property line buffer to 15 feet. This rear property line's a little awkward, and so they, in some areas, it's 23 feet, and in some areas, it's only 10 feet. So there is that, that related condition to the ultimate width of the property line buffer. They will be preserving as many of the trees that are on that slope as possible in order to retain the integrity of that, that there's some large trees there. A couple of other conditions that you saw, there's a setback reduction that they're requesting, and that's in order to move the building right up to Biltmore, do that more urban design where the building's at the back of the street, and keep it further away from the neighborhood. And there's also a slight maximum exceeded for the impervious surface standard. But on a, another note, the applicant has required, has proposed, as I mentioned, the transit shelter, and then also transit passes that will be provided to all guests and employees, so I wanted to point that out. The applicant is required to hold a neighborhood meeting for any conditional zoning. They held three neighborhood meetings. Each time, when they heard the concerns of the, the neighborhood, they revised different aspects of their proposal. Originally, the, the design included a driveway on White Fawn, and at the first neighborhood meeting, the applicant and developer heard that that was not something that the neighborhood wanted to do. They wanted to eliminate all of the potential traffic from coming off of White Fawn. They wanted to eliminate all of the potential traffic from coming off of White Fawn. So they took that driveway out completely and only have that driveway on Biltmore. Other concerns that were heard had to do with building form, the roof line. They altered the roof line to try to make it a little more flat as a neighborhood request. There was a previous, the previous proposal had a balcony at the north end of the project, and neighbor who lives directly behind there said, "Rather not have a balcony right behind my house." So the applicant has decided to move that to the opposite side of the building where it's adjacent to institutional zoning and won't have a house right behind it. The project was approved by the TRC in September and received unanimous support from the planning and zoning.
Jessica, could I stop for a second?
Sure.
And could you tell us how many folks attended these neighborhood meetings?
Staff doesn't attend the neighborhood meetings, so I don't have all of that information, but I know that the applicant can.
Okay. That's a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Planning and Zoning Commission was last month, received unanimous support from there. We've received some, early on, we received some comments about concern with traffic, and then that was, we didn't hear that after the White Fawn driveway was removed. I was copied on an email just yesterday or today with a concern about traffic again, as well as the use. At Planning and Zoning Commission, a number of neighborhood residents were there and spoke with general support of the project. Wanted a restaurant in it, but otherwise, you know, were supportive of the project, as well as the process, with the applicant responding to their concerns in the way that they did. So staff is recommending support of this project. The use is considered complementary to the, in the, this is the map that shows the future land use map. The site is within the Employment and Anchor Institution Center category, and in that category, lodging use is considered complementary. It's adjacent to the downtown use, where lodging, downtown category, where lodging is also considered an appropriate use. The comprehensive plan anticipates a possible southward expansion of the downtown district. So it seems like, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, this is an appropriate location for this use. So that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I've got a couple of questions, Jessica. So the property line, or the setback issue, this is, let's see. Talk about the relationship between the setbacks, the property line, the landscaping and the property line, the rear buffer and the height. There's, like, aren't they, there's things that are related, right?
They're related. So there's, as far as the setbacks, the front setback and side setbacks are five and fifteen feet for this district, and the applicant's asking to reduce that to zero for the front and side, to really bring the building up to Biltmore and to that corner with White Fawn. Now, the rear, the rear setback for a lodging use is stated to be twenty-five feet. They're asking for ten feet in the rear. The one, the condition that had to do with the property line buffer, ordinarily, when you've got lodging expansion, or most of our commercial districts adjacent to a single-family zoning, you would be required to have a thirty-foot wide buffer, but the code allows an administrative reduction. If the grade change between the two is greater than fifteen feet, then you are allowed to reduce that in half. And so they were taking that administrative reduction, which would allow for a fifteen-foot buffer, but then, as I mentioned, it's really right here where the buffer is down to ten feet. This is where the residential zoning is, where they're adjacent to the residential zoning. They do meet that with the administrative reduction, but not on this end. Did I get to all of them yet?
I think so. I mean, the height was another.
Oh, the height.
Yeah.
So, and the height, when we have in the expansion district and lodging expansion, if you're within one hundred feet of a residentially zoned area, then within that one hundred feet, you have to, your building is limited to the maximum height in the residential district, which is forty feet. So this, these are, again, those residential parcels back here. So this line shows where that one-hundred-foot restricted area is. So this is actually where their parking deck is in the rear, and so they're restricted, they cannot have a building taller than forty feet within that area. And I think it's about twenty-three, twenty-four feet that they've got, those two levels of parking. Then the building itself is seven stories, but that's all outside of that restricted area.
Any other questions?
It's my privilege to represent Mill and Asheville LLC in this matter. Before I talk about the project, I want to talk very briefly about the principles behind Mill and Asheville. They have an interesting story to tell. Many of you know Pratik Bhakka. You may not know, Pratik was born in India. He came to Asheville when he was twelve years old as a little boy. His parents bought a motel in Camlar where they lived as a family while he went to high school at Inca High School. Since then, his family has owned a number of hotels. They've owned them around the county. They'll buy them, fix them up, they've built new ones. They've been good corporate citizens. He went away to school and got a degree in engineering from NC State, and his father got sick, and he called Pratik, and he said, "Would you come home and help?" That was almost twenty-five years ago. Pratik and his wife and their children live in the Inca-Candler community. His kids go to the Inca school system. Monarch Patel is also from India. He moved here when he was seven. His family bought the Rock Haven Motel over on Patton Avenue. They lived there with his family and Monarch's uncle and his family, and he went to Vance Elementary School. They too have bought a number of different hotels around the area, including a hotel in Hendersonville and then back in Asheville. Monarch went to school at UNC Charlotte. He got a degree in finance and actually worked for Bank of America for several years before coming back home to join the family business. These two families, the Bhakka and Patel families, have been friends for decades. They got together two years ago and decided to buy this piece of property. It's less than an acre. It sits on Biltmore Avenue in a site where, surprisingly, there is a lack of hotels. There are no hotels that service this area. It's an area that is close to Mission Hospital, walking distance, and it's also walking distance from downtown. And what they saw was, there was in fact a need for not just a regular hotel, but an extended stay hotel, a hotel where doctors and nurses that travel to Asheville to spend weeks at a time as locum tenens would have a place to stay and a kitchen. It would be a place where, if the HCA transaction goes through with Mission Hospital, there will be division headquarters here in Asheville. It would be a place for their visiting executives to stay. And of course, it's a place for other business travelers and tourists to stay. They believe that there is a significant need for this hotel in this location. So they hired civil design concepts to work on the design that you've seen, and they hired Defoe architects to do the design that I think is a beautiful design. It will be a welcome addition to that part of the city. Then they started saying, "Well, how could we be good corporate citizens for this part of the city?" And they reached out to Mission Hospital, and they have offered to Mission that if patients or their families need to stay because they have a loved one at the cancer center or in the hospital, they would get preferential pricing. They looked across the street to the Child Crisis Center, which is a nonprofit that serves troubled youth, where their families sometimes have to come stay with them for periods of time. And they explained what they proposed, and they said, "We would offer preferential pricing to your families, and hopefully you saw a copy of the letter from Pam Koppich." She sees a need for this project. They looked a little farther down the road to the ABCCM 356 Pharmacy on Biltmore Avenue, and they talked to Scott Rogers, and they learned that they actually had something in common. They have employed people who are beneficiaries of ABCCM, including Kipling Jones, a resident at the Veterans Restoration Corps, who wrote a letter to you, hopefully you had a chance to see. And they talked to Mr. Rogers, and they told him what they proposed, including, you know, not only this great project for a part of the city that could use a little help, frankly, ever since Matthews Ford closed, but they said, "You know, hey, maybe there's opportunities to provide more jobs for veterans and other folks who are struggling and are beneficiaries of ABCCM." And Scott Rogers said, "You know, I support that. I support what you guys are trying to do." And he wrote a letter of support. They realized that not far away, the city, the county, and the Housing Authority, together with Mountain Housing Opportunities, was getting ready to transform Lee Walker Heights. More than doubled the number of residential spaces, and they thought, you know, "How can we help them?" And they sat down with Mountain Housing Opportunities, and they talked about the plan that they had, and Mountain Housing shared with them the plans that they have and the Housing Authority has to transform that part of the city. And Scott Dedman wrote a letter that hopefully you saw, where he said, "This extended stay hotel will clearly and attractively anchor the southeast corner of this intersection. We are impressed with the design and the landscaping and how they have responded to neighborhood concerns." But Scott said, and Cindy Week said, "You need to talk with the folks from the Housing Authority." So we did. We sat down with David Nash and Jean Bell, and the first thing they said was, "Tell us about jobs. What can you do for residents of the Housing Authority? For residents not only of Lee Walker and the redevelopment of Lee Walker, but throughout the city?" And we said, "Well, we can do the very same thing we're doing with ABCCM. We can provide a job training program." Jean said, "Well, tell us about the kind of jobs." And we explained, you know, from the housekeeping jobs to the front desk jobs, to folks that work at the front desk that have made it all the way up to manager with these companies. And he said, "You know, that would work with some of our residents who have young children. They have to put on the bus in the morning. They could work for a few hours. They could walk over there and then go home." But he said, "What about residents of other parts of the city, other Housing Authority developments?" We said, "We'll give you free bus passes. In fact, we'll give free bus passes to all of our staff, and for that matter, all of our guests that want one." But the truth is, we think most folks will come in there, they'll drive, they'll park. If they want to go downtown, they'll walk, or they'll take a two-minute Uber. If they're going to go to the hospital, they'll certainly walk. And so we said to the Housing Authority, "What else can we do?" And they said, "Well, you know, this is an expensive project that we're doing. We have no money for playground equipment for the Lee Walker Heights Playground." We said, "How much will that cost?" They said, "$125,000. And my clients have committed to give a contribution in that amount upon approval of this zoning petition. Regardless of when they start construction, they will make that kind of a contribution." Because if you look, it makes sense that this hotel project would want to work together with the Lee Walker Housing Development, as well as the property right across the street that the city has an option. Think about how anchoring this development with this new street opens up, what that will do for the property that the city has an option on from Duke Power. We're convinced that it will be a good project. But in our meetings with each of you, what we heard over and over again, and we heard it again today with the survey results, was affordable housing is our number-one problem. We heard that. And one member said, "Why can't you put affordable housing on that site?" And the answer is, it doesn't actually make sense to try to do affordable housing on a site that's three-quarters of an acre in that location. The highest and best use would be for a hotel. But what we can do, what we can do is, once the hotel gets up and running, my clients are prepared to make a contribution of $100,000 a year for five years to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund if this project is approved. This is a good project. These are good people. They're citizens and residents of this community. They care about the same things you care about, and they believe that this project is good for the city of Asheville. I would ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to now open the public hearing. Okay, I made your question. Okay. I'm going to now open the public hearing on this. Again, same rules apply. Please state your name. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Tom Sheath. I'm the general manager of Noble Cava, which is at 268 Biltmore. And we're in full support of this project. I think it's the best thing to put in that space. It's currently an empty lot. It's separated from the neighborhood above it already, just by height, and it's a perfect thing to fill in the corridor between the hospital and downtown. It's going to be good for us. Sounds like it's going to be really good for the community, and as someone who's, I've had family members at Mission, I know there's a need for people to have somewhere to stay when they're going to visit. So I just want to express our full support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I'm Ronald Gates, pastor of Greater Works Church of God and Christ here in the city of Asheville. Have known both of them for, both of the project owners for quite some time, and had opportunity to speak with them in reference to this project, in which I believe it will be a tremendous project and a great enhancement, definitely, to the landscape of that area. I had asked them, you know, both Pratik and Monarch, in regards to, you know, how would that help Asheville and the citizens? How would it benefit them? And of course, Legal has already went over quite a bit of the points, but I shared with him, I said, "Well, talk to me about exactly what would you be able to do?" And he shared with me about far as the individuals that's in Lee Walker Heights to be able to provide, you know, job opportunities for some thirty-plus. And with them having a job, you know, with individuals that will be there, it's creating a space for them and their children to have some type of childcare while they're working. Very great need in regards to being able to support their family. Not only that, he shared with me in regards to helping the individuals that are employed, I believe Jessica alluded to, in regards to helping them with, and Legal, in regards to their education, you know, help pushing their education. Of course, both of these individuals, both of these men have went to school and found the benefits of education, and to support someone of that status, to be able to help them in their educational goals. And then also, as we was talking, he says, "The project would also benefit Lee Walker Heights in that area in regards to the transit." I believe Jessica alluded to that, in regards to the transit shelter, and then even help providing, you know, transportation and tickets. So as I, in my conversation and in their conversation, and the conversation that they have shared with you, it's been consistent. It's been consistent, and that speaks to the individual's integrity of being consistent with that speech. Also, it will help the landscape in that area, because I believe it really will enhance it. I would say the tourists, Asheville tourists can benefit whenever they have people that are coming there. Then they spoke about Mission, being able to benefit from it and then 365. And so there's others that will be able to benefit from the hotel in its own self, being in that position. And then, you know, as they shared, the support financially, to be able to help housing, you know, to put a playground there. I found that honorable before them, you know, to be able to say, "I want to put a, you know, playground, and we'll, you know, we'll write the fee for that. We'll write it off." So thank you for allowing me, Sharon.
Is there anyone else wishing to? Is there anyone else wishing to?
Good evening. My name is Johanna Johnson, and I have a business in this city. And I just wanted to tell you the reason why I support Mr. Patel in building the Renaissance Inn, because I think, number one, too, they would have jobs and income coming in. Also, with the tourists coming through and, you know, hotels right now are proper full. And this will be a very good access. And you know, when the tourists come in, they own, not only tour the city, they own, they tour the surrounding area. They come to tour what Asheville have. Asheville has a lot that they like to see. And I think that Mr. Patel building would be beautiful access. Also, I know Mr. Patel about helping other, he has a very strong relationship with his employee because one lived next door to me. And Mr. Patel has helped out. He's encouraged people, and he's a very good man. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lual Whitby, Living Water Ministry. And I'm here to say, I believe in what they're going to do in building. I think about how they, well, Mr. Patel, and came to me and talked to me, and I live like two streets over from where he's going to build that. And he began to tell me his vision, his plans, and he told me the history. And then he went back and told me how his family grew up here. So he knew the history. And, and one thing that really triggered me was, an old man veteran came into the building of what we were in, 80 years old, and he said to him, and to me, "Uh, I wanted to go to a hotel, but when I got ready to pay, the prices went up." And Mr. Patel said this, he said, "Let me work with you." And he made it happen for the veteran that was trying to go to another city to go to an event, but because the stuff was so high, hotel was so high, he made it happen where this 80-year-old veteran can go and stay in a hotel for a cheaper price. I look at him when he went, my cousin stayed right behind where he's going to build that. And he went and talked to him personally. And, you know, he made time for him. He listened to him. He didn't rush. He really listened to him. They really enjoyed that because they heard the voice of the people who stand behind him. I feel like this man is going to be an access because he, I feel like his word is his bond. And his staff, they are so awesome. I met them, and they treated me with dignity and respect. And that's so important. When a community can come together, work together, and like my friend said from Washington, she worked, she worked for the Labor Board, she said, "I look at Asheville on TV every day, and they welcome people to come here." Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I am Pam Copege. I am one of those that wrote the letter of support of this facility. I have several interests in this facility. I live in the neighborhood, Kennelworth, behind where this is going to be. So I attended the first construction meeting on the hotel for several reasons. One, I live in the neighborhood. And two, I am the Director of the Child Adolescent Crisis Facility that is adjacent to the property. We serve children ages six to 17 years old in crisis and from 23 counties. At the first construction meeting, I don't recall any resistance to the, the hotel itself. I do recall several questions about the quality of the hotel that was going to be put there. I face this massive area of bareness every day as I come into work and as I pull out of work. And to me, the hotel that they're proposing to put there could not do anything but improve the quality of that area. But the children that we serve come from 23 counties. They come from as far as ways Ash County all the way down through Cherokee County. When you, as a parent, have to bring a child into a facility, a six-year-old child into a facility, and say goodbye to them knowing that they're going to be impatient, it's hard for you, sometimes the distance is two and a half hours, for them to drive back home and leave their child at our facility. This facility will allow parents to be close to their children. We do visitation four days a week. They don't have a long way to travel. Also, we're open 24/7, 365. We have winter coming with snow. We have to staff our facility as a hospital does. So this facility will allow a place for our staff to be there so that we can serve these children. I ask that you keep an open mind and look outside of the boxes some of the qualities that this hotel is going to offer for the community. I was just blown away hearing that they were going to offer Lee Walker Heights $125,000 for playground. $100,000 a year for five years to the, the Housing Authority. Where are we going to get that money that they're proposing to, to offer if this goes through? So keep an open mind when you think about this situation. There's a lot of pros to back this project up. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the $500,000, as I heard it, was to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Sorry, Jean. Sorry, Jean.
Sure.
That's what they said.
And Mayor, members of council, I'm here basically to echo some of the same comments that I think have had, with the exception of two personal experiences. I have someone in my family that died of cancer, and it is really a stressful situation for a family to come into a city and try to find somewhere to stay and try to afford to stay there in addition to the emotional trauma that you go through. And I know we have another one down the other end of the street, but as the hospital expands, it would appear to me that that would be really essential to offer our, our visitors and patients, relatives, a place to stay. I'm really excited about the, obviously, for the playground equipment. As you all know, when you're trying to build a development of this size, it gets very challenging. I'm sure at some point, we could get enough money. But they were very gracious in offering $125,000 for us to know that we can put the playground in the plan immediately. And I thought that was extremely big for us to offer our residents healthy, vibrant opportunities. And last but not least, it, it would be optimum for us, and I think it would be optimum for the city, but I know for us at the Housing Authority, if we could do something that was inclusive for this city for people of low income and people, minority people, that would say a lot, as you all have moved forward to do other things to be more inclusive. It would be nice for our residents to be in a vibrant area that is about trying to present jobs, activities. The way the vacant lot is now, it's really kind of discouraging. I used to run that route. It's just vacant. And to have a motel, that would be a lot more vibrant for our community, to our kids, and for our residents to walk down and go to work, or just walk down and get on a bus stop and have that much positive activity next to them. So I, too, am a big supporter of this project, and I would ask that you have the same consideration for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Thanks, everyone. I'm going to speak against us because, again, we have hotels going up while we're still not meeting affordable housing goals and definitely not meeting deeply affordable housing goals. We have a problem in this town about living wages, too. We are, I think, maybe like 16% higher as far as wages as the rest of North Carolina, but the rest of North Carolina doesn't have to deal with the housing costs that we do here. And so it's, it's a concern because, you know, I appreciate hearing about the jobs that are being offered, but I wonder if these are actually going to be sufficient for people to pay bills. It's concerning to see another hotel go up when 18, I believe, don't necessarily quote me on that, went up, when it were approved last year, just a great number are going through. And, you know, again, affordable housing goals are not being met. And I wonder about, you know, talking about, you know, transportation, talking about affordable housing being such huge issues in this town. And I look at, I look at this hotel going up, and I just wonder, like, are there ways to use that space for living wage jobs in the community? Can that be, you know, incorporated into some of the 100% renewable energy goals? Can, can things be done on this plot of land rather than continuing the idea of just building hotel after hotel? That might not even actually be sufficient for folks living in housing. And I also want to say that it was just up the street that Johnny Rush was attacked by Chris Hickman. And I wonder about what that's going to mean if there's a residence in there and what kind of pressure that continues to put on the community here. And I, you know, I think there's just a lot of, a lot of things that are still not resolved in this community. And, and I think the council should be more proactive about really, you know, asking more questions about, you know, more hotels going up. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, first I want to thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes to speak with you today. My name is Casey Mens, and I am the General Manager at Quality Inn. I was born and raised here in Asheville, and so I've been proud to call this community my home for many years. And it's been particularly satisfying to work with such a supportive employer as Monarch Patel. I began working for him in 2012 as a front desk agent at the Super 8 on Tunnel Road. The professional environment fosters such a sense of camaraderie. His father even stops by every day to have lunch with us, speaks to every employee, makes sure everyone gets at least a little hello. And at one point, I ended up actually branching out to work at a resort. But that experience wasn't as rewarding as it was to work with Monarch and his family as well. And I have been fortunate enough to have such a great opportunity to come back and work for Monarch, and I actually became the General Manager of one of his hotels. The nurturing environment just makes it like a second home to all of us. And that's why we've had such longevity in employees, and it's just become a second family to all of us. So thank you again for letting me speak today.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Questions, comments, or a motion?
So I've got some comments, if I could. You know, I, I think, you know, I mean, I think all of us in the room are aware that there is some sense of fatigue as it comes to hotels in the city. We know it, you know it. And, you know, as, as a council member, I view my role as to look at each project that comes before me individually and to judge it on its own merits. I have, to this point, not voted in favor of a hotel, though I've only been on council for a year. I, I am going to be supportive of this, of this project. I think it fits a specific need for that part of town as it relates to the hospital and the childcare center for, for patients, as, as we heard. I, I think this is, I think it's a, a good, a good place for it as, as it relates to that. You know, in terms of, of, of the criticisms that I hear a lot about hotels generally is, what's in it for Asheville residents, right? People, kind of the stereotype here is asking the question of, you know, what, what good are they actually bringing to the city? Are they a net gain? Are they a net detriment? And, and I think what is being offered here tonight is something that is a, is a clear net positive for the city. Whether it is the, the money for the playground, whether it's the money for affordable housing, whether it is the commitment to put, for, for jobs for the people in that area, that is very persuasive to me. And again, I understand where, where folks are coming from right now. We do have an affordable housing problem in this city. There's no question about that. I don't believe affordable housing is going to go in that spot. I just, I just don't. And I think, long-term, a, a hotel that is being proposed in this way, not just any hotel, but this proposal would be a positive thing in that spot. So I, I will be supportive of this tonight.
Just say one quick thing. I, I'm with Vijay on this for all the reasons that he said. I also just want to do a, sort of a public service announcement to, to neighborhoods. So we started hearing from some neighborhood people today who basically said, "We didn't reach out to you because we thought this was a done deal." And I just want to say to all those 25% of survey respondents who are watching and anybody here, we want to hear from neighborhoods. We want that information. Ideally, get your neighborhood association to pass a resolution for, against, neutral, whatever. But please don't ever assume that your input as a neighborhood does not matter. For some of us, it is a threshold consideration for any project going in. So I, I will just plant that out there. I think the, the, the confusion around the, we've, around the neighborhood, I mean, there isn't a neighborhood position on this project. I do commend the, the developers for meeting not just the one required time, but three times and being responsive to the neighborhood concerns at each of those three meetings. That is, that is going above and beyond on that front as I think they have on the fronts that Vijay has mentioned. So I, I am going to be supportive of this project.
This is kind of a, not irony, but it's kind of ironic. I think we've got an interesting situation. When I was elected back in 2015, November of 2015, I believe in January of 2016, my first vote was on a hotel. That was the redevelopment of the old BB&amp;T building. And it was interesting to me because part of that 2015 election, coming into office, people had some major concerns about some issues around the city. Affordable housing was definitely an issue. Equity was definitely an issue. And affordable housing, as it pertains to hotels and development of downtown and how that, how that is shaped. And in that very first vote, it was amazing to me that I felt like I was kind of thrust into office through some major issues, one concerning hotels. And the very first vote after that election, guess what we passed? A hotel. And it was amazing. And it was, and I, there was a quote from that meeting that became known as the McKibben Standard, where McKibben graciously gave $250,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And his words were, "I know we have a lot of council, new council members, and I know the citizens have asked you to slow the pace of growth. So I've tried to give you something to take back to your constituents, something that you can use to balance it out." And we, and when we passed, I voted against it. And when we, when we passed that hotel on that very first vote that I had with a hotel, it made me go, is Asheville fickle when it comes to this, this deal with hotels? I just won an election with one of the major issues being no more hotels. Let's, let's try to balance the way that we move our development, however that may be, whether it may sound silly or not. My thought process is, where, where are we moving on this? So I've, I've, I've voted for some hotels. As we move further and further away from the city center, there are not so many issues with, with infill development and affordable housing. It begs me to defer, to wonder, you know, it's not appropriate, you say, for affordable housing. What about housing period? I mean, there's going to be a 103-room hotel there. I think it's time for that, that work session that the mayor spoke about. I think it's time that we start to look at these situations again and get that information through those work sessions on how all of this kind of affects Asheville. I'm not going to support this. I think all the conditions are, are, are interesting in itself. But I feel like there's a greater conversation that still needs to be had on what the effects of hotels in the city of Asheville are and the people that supported me coming into the 2015 election, how they feel about the continued exacerbation of hotels as it pertains toward the city center. So I'm not going to support this.
Go ahead.
With Keith, I'm not going to support this. When Keith and I were elected, he talked about the first hotel, but it was 13 months before we came up with the new rule that hotels had to come before council. And during that 13 months, we were flooded with applicants for people to get their hotels. in prior to the rule changes. And we are above and beyond our need of hotels in the city. We have talked about a moratorium, and I don't know if that can be done, but personally, as far as my vote goes, the moratorium has begun. And especially when it comes to hotels in the central business district or, or near downtown, you're not going to get my support. I, I, I hope that council starts to send a message that we don't want this. You know, come back to us with other things. Bring housing forward to us. We've got plenty of hotels. We need, we need housing. And so, just, I, I don't like to see developers sink a bunch of money into a project that's not going to get approved. And I don't have any idea whether or not this one is going to be approved. But I, I do want folks to think long and hard before they start to invest a lot of money towards the next hotel project that it may very well get voted down.
Just, I, I just want to add, we've been skipping along here, having conversations about the issue of, of the fiscal health of the city and its ability to maintain the infrastructure that we have here and still support a very vibrant tourism industry that we have in Asheville. And, and I think we're, we're at a critical point where there's no doubt that the tourism economy is a pillar of the foundation that is Asheville. It always has been. It's a part of our history. It's undeniable. Sitting in this seat, one of our challenges, however, though, is to use the revenue stream we have that comes into this city to be able to pay for the infrastructure and expense needs related to hosting this many visitors we have to our city every year. And we, you know, this is on us, I'm saying us as a city council, to try to, to figure out and to balance. But I, I don't personally feel comfortable continuing to make decisions about additional hotels until we've figured out how to address our, our lack of fiscal diversity to be able to, revenue diversity, to be able to support the real needs that we have around infrastructure improvements. And I'm talking about everything from repairing sidewalks to cleaning, to repairing streets and potholes, and building out the capital infrastructure in our pipeline right now. And not to mention the challenge that we have from a vegetarian standpoint and, and the police and fire needs we have. You know, we're not a town of 90,000 when it comes to paying for a 911 response and emergency calls and the costs that go along with that. We're, we're a much bigger city than that. And I truly appreciate what these hoteliers today have put together to bring forward to us. And I think that, that is the right thing to do. And what, what I would hope is that if this doesn't pass tonight, and I, I am not going to be able to support it, that they would consider coming back to us again in a year's time or whenever, whenever that might be. So that we can, we as a city may have reached a different place and feel that we have the capacity to be able to continue this trend. But for, for right now, I, I think that we've got to make sure our house is in order and that we're balancing the needs of our community against a growing industry that brings a great deal of positive, but also brings a great deal of challenge for us. And I see why, getting up and walking.
Mayor, I'm going to comment. And I appreciate everyone's thoughtful approach to this complicated problem. I do. But we would respectfully withdraw the application. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, they can leave. So, the application was withdrawn. That concludes the public hearing. We have, I have one person signed up to speak under the public comment period, so we're moving on to the public comment. This is not regarding this application. This is the open public comment period regarding anything else that was not already on our agenda. I have one person signed up to speak, and that is Roger Sharp. Yes. Mr. Sharp, you'll have three minutes to address council.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Roger Sharp. I formerly was state senator from Morganton, North Carolina in my youth. I retired over a year ago in Washington, DC. And of any place in North Carolina, I decided that I would make Asheville my home. It wasn't a strange place to me by any means. For a year, I have been an observer in this city. By choice, chose to write the public transit system, and that's what I want to speak on this evening. I submitted an op-ed, please, that was published in Nashville Citizen a week ago. And if it's the process, I'd like to just enter it in the record.
You can give it to Maggie, the clerk.
Because it is verbatim what I wrote. That's unusual in editor.
Joel, you're getting all kinds of kudos tonight.
I, I cannot believe the condition that the public bus transportation system has gotten into. And I'd be willing to meet any one of you in the morning to go for a walk. And we'd start with the terminal. It is filthy. The bathroom, the water fountain are broken. It is not clean. It is not painted. The structures holding up the roof are rusted. And just on a personal note, I kept thinking somebody was telling to me about the tourist season here in Asheville. And I thought, surely the bus terminal would get a fresh paint job if the leaves. The bus stops, and I've gone all over the city, are filthy. The trash is often piled over, the cigarette butts, the other debris is accumulated. Nothing is washed or cleaned. And I could not imagine that that was on par with the city of Asheville and its reputation as a destination center for tourists and others. And so, with the young people that were here tonight, the gentlemen from the Alderman Society, I was sitting there thinking, why don't more people join me in getting a public transportation that all the public can enjoy? And be glad that they did. To reduce the cost on the city's resources. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if there's anyone wishing to speak, yes.
I'm mayor, council. My name's Reed Thompson. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I have a presentation that I'd like to give. I think maybe staff didn't, didn't, I was disappointed that I went to three planning meetings over my project and there was nobody from the transportation department at the TRC, at council, or my neighborhood meeting, or the PMZ meeting. And it seems that that is where a lot of the problems were. And I feel like some of you might not actually know what it's like. I know I've invited all of you to come have coffee with me on multiple occasions. And I'd just like to play for you, I have four people with me. So, I'd, I'd like to play for you 10 minutes of one morning on my street.
Maggie, did you get?
I have started.
Your turn.
Let me see, quick down there. This is, you know, let's start right here. So, this is starting at the end. These is the police officers arriving on Maxwell Street. This, we have a report from the school of government from 2006 that says, "This needs to be equal to or better than screening." This is where my neighbor Brandy lives. This is where my neighbor Ralph lives. This is 7:00 AM in the morning, and this is your police officer pecking my street. So, is this legal?
They have these parts?
Yes.
They have a pulse of heat.
Hold on, some heat. Uh, so, I recall I threw in that there was not a major, would you go there? It just didn't happen. If they weren't doing this, and here's your real, so I'm just kind of wondering, I've been sleeping my bed this morning. This is what left me out. I think we all were dead. Does this wood resonate? I said it was, uh, they said the jetty route, I'm not too sure. Yeah. He, he, he's never been found in town. He's not supposed to, uh, that's what I was told. And so, I mean, they're, they're sorry, right there. So, we got a sign, we got a report on the sidewalk. It's not enforceable, is that what you're telling me? Did he write a ticket?
No, we, we wrote, we wrote a ticket yesterday, but hey, he took that desired route and, you know.
He's on the sidewalk, sir. He's pointing straight at my house, but council says.
I can't, let me, let me make this, let me make an extra call, please.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just asking questions because y'all are here, and this is what I've been told. And I own these property right here. That's where my sister and my niece used to live. Not so fun to wake up to. This is one day in 14 years. We've had a report from the school of government since 2006. We have letters that I've written, council members that are here in 2013 that I could have written yesterday. Here's just a regular trial. This is me in my backyard. This is, this is what we're worried about, screening my neighbors from me. And this is what we've been listening to on my front porch for 14 years because no one will protect me from my neighbors. You all know my neighbors, right? Let's see. And then this is what enforcement looks like on Maxwell Street. I've received notices of violation for vegetation being on the sidewalk. Council set the sidewalk way to be blocked, so let's get the sidewalk open.
Sure. Hey, one, one more thing. I want to talk to you real quick. I don't mind if you, you feel.
And this truck here is coming down the street from the opposite direction.
Do you want to keep it running?
From a, from a sign that has a no-truck sign.
Can you turn it off so we can let anybody else speak?
Before, no, this is my 10 minutes on speech.
I thought that wasn't the buzzer?
It's not called to him, sir. We're not writing notices. Thank you for trying to quiet me again. I appreciate that. You're not, not even giving him a warning. Now, this is the way the police enforce it. No warnings. Hold on, no, we're not, no more verbal warnings. We're writing written warnings, or we're not doing our job, sir. Excuse me? We're made on the sidewalk. Could you get this truck off of my street? Could you, here, I'm on the sidewalk. Can I use it, please? Can you get this truck out of here?
Sure. I'm going to talk real quick. Please, please don't like, uh, let me stop right there.
Sir, this is in my way. I'm trying to use the city sidewalk. Can you please make it so I can use the city sidewalk in my neighborhood? Okay, well then, let's get on with it. This man has been here hundreds of times, and this is the same way the police deal with it every time. So, is that a verbal warning again? How many verbal warnings does this guy get?
I'm substituting somebody else's route, dude.
I tell you what, if you let him unload here in the street. This is nothing short of corruption, fellas. No notices of violation are ever written. Hey, what about coming, are, so, you guys are saying that this end of the street doesn't have a no-truck over 10,000 pound sign on it? Is that what you're saying? That this end of the street doesn't have one of these signs? That guy came down the street, and you all will not do anything against anybody who has him. No, 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 the guy that came down here. Excuse me, sir. Hey, they're going to be back in five minutes. Do I need to call you again? The man right here is blocking the sidewalk for the part of his truck. I've received notices of violation for vegetation being on the sidewalk. Council set the sidewalk way to be blocked, so let's get the sidewalk open.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we have a closed session motion.
I move the Asheville City Council to a closed session for the following reasons. To prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes, the law that makes information privileged and confidential in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 1080. in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 10A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 11A1. Number two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit or potential lawsuit. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, or conditions of appointment of an individual public officer or employee, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 11A6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 168 through 168, the Personnel Privacy Act. The statutory authorization contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 11A1.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. And wait, hang on, just a second, I mean.
And we'll adjourn from the closed session.
Okay, but before we go into closed session, Kathy, can you just please tell us what the enforcement situation is going to be on Maxwell Street?
So we met yesterday with the Police Department and with the Transportation Department. The moving violations can only be cited by the Police Department, and they are prepared to increase enforcement. They have, they are not, they are not writing warnings. They're giving citations to everyone. They, the requirement for the sidewalk is that there has to be four foot of clearance. And if there is four foot of clearance for a handicapped individual, then they can, they're able to maneuver through that. We are working on a plan to get someone there from five to seven hours a day at least for the next six weeks. We are trying to staff that up and put resources in place so that we are able to write tickets and take the appropriate action. And that would be somebody from parking. That would not be able to, they are not able to write tickets for moving violations, but they are for parking. We've been working with the neighborhood to make they have, they have these have hang tags, so they have to have hang tags on their car to be parked there. So we are working with the residents along the street to make sure that they have the appropriate hang tags so they don't get ticketed. But we will increase enforcement over the next six to eight weeks and write tickets to all those who violate. We're also in contact with the grease, the people who own the grease truck, to try to get them to limit the times that they come, so that they're more toward the day. And we'll also work with the dumpster. We'll also work with the folks who do the dumpster as well, to try to get them there during the day.
And I continue to think that there may be either outright disagreement or just confusion about what the rules are on Maxwell Street in terms of trucks, and what trucks can go where and all of that. So maybe I can just ask you, or Sabrina, or somebody to sort of send us an email that lays that out, so that if there's been a difference of opinion about that, we can explore that. But if, to the degree that part of the ongoing contention there is whether something is a violation, we should at least be able to get clear on what the rule is. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.